Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the February 2nd, 2024 Meeting of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners. I make up for our last scheduled Tuesday meeting, which was canceled. Let's begin with the roll call and announcement of the open public meetings law. Lou?
County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy.
Here.
And for the record, please note that Commissioner Duffy is participating telephonically. Commissioners Gallo.
Here.
James.
Here.
Lapore.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director Bartlet.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, sorry. Yes. The Passaic County Board of County Commissioners has agreed to change the date of the regular board meeting, which was originally scheduled and advertised in the annual notice for Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, to Friday, February 2nd, 2024. Today, Friday, February 2nd, the regular board meeting will commence at 12:00 noon in the room 220 in the County Commissioners Boardroom, Passaic County Administration, Building 401, Grand Street, Patterson, New Jersey. The Herald News in the Record was noticed on Tuesday, January 30th, 2024, that the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners' regular board meeting has been changed to today, Friday, February 2nd, 2024, commencing at 12:00 noon. This satisfies the 48-hour advance notice of the board meeting. A copy of the public notice was also published in the legal ads section of both the Herald News and the Record.
Thank you, Lou. As we rise, I'm going to take the next couple items a little bit out of order. We are going to start with the pledge, but we're going to follow that with a moment of silence. 2024 so far has been, here in Passaic County, what Her Majesty the Queen would have called an annus horribilis, a terrible, terrible start to 2024, as we began the year losing Councilwoman Lauren Murphy in the city of Clifton, a longtime public servant of this county at the Board of Social Services and the one-stop leader in our Democratic Party and someone who everyone, I'm sure, has a story of how she helped and made a difference in their lives. And then, of course, as we were here waiting to start our meeting last week, we got the terrible news about Sheriff Richard Burdick. So after the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember them, as well as all the others that we've lost in the military through COVID and otherwise. And then, Father Ryan, I would ask you to bring us out of that moment of silence with some words of solace. Orlando, would you lead us in the pledge?
Do you join me in placing your hand over your heart and saluting our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Create a God with you, there is no darkness. Your character has no shadows, and you are pure and good. Yet, in our broken world, we see so much darkness around us. Bring your light and restoring presence to the dark places in our lives. Bring your hope to hearts that feel defeated. Bring your love and compassion to those in pain. Give us faith to save with the psalmist. Lord, your light is my lamp. My God illuminates my darkness. Show us glimpses of your presence with us and the comfort you can bring. You are trustworthy, good, and true, and we thank you for caring for us so deeply and beautifully. Open our eyes to see you at work today. Give us your light. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Returning the agenda, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 28th, 2023?
Move it.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James. Lapore. Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 3rd, 2024?
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James. Lapore. Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes.
May I have a motion for approval of the proclamation?
Second.
Cruz. Secondly, by Lapore. Gallo.
Gallo.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James. Lapore. Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes. That brings us to letter H, our administrative report. Matthew?
Thank you, Director. First, I'm going to call up Dr. Gungill, our health officer, and Iris Lee Pantel, our assistant health officer, to present on the state of health in the county of Passaic. Come on up, Dr. Gungill.
Thank you. Bear in mind that the information that we provide is based on programs that we provide throughout the county. There are a couple of programs like that, and the others are specifically for the municipalities that we cover. So it's almost a twofold type of report. I just want to acknowledge in the room are my division leads, and so if you have any particular question for their programs, they'll be happy to answer your questions. Okay. As you know, we have several divisions in the Health Department, and this slide shows those divisions: mosquito, environmental, emergency preparedness, communicable disease and nursing, health promotion and wellness. And this is a 2023 report, but for 2024, we are also going to have weights and measures. So for next year, you'll have a report from weights and measures as well. All right, the first division I'm mentioning is the mosquito control division, and this is the slide that speaks to what they had done for 2023. There were 26 West Nile virus mosquito pools. That means when they went testing in 26 different areas in the county, they found West Nile virus. There were two cases of West Nile virus in Passaic County, but happily, no one lost their lives for it. Our requests for services were down last year. We're not sure why. Perhaps, you know, the work was done so well that nobody complained, because I think the previous time it was over 400 requests for services. Another important point I'd like to share is the 15,000 fish that were stocked in our streams and pools so that they could eat the mosquito larvae if necessary, and public education events that our superintendent and entomologist may have had in the community. The Division of Environmental Health is a pretty large division, and they completed over 700 site visits, and that is planned inspections that they did and then complaints that they would get from DEP or residents. Some of the issues that they addressed were odor, noise, solid waste, hazmat incidents, so, you know, the jackknife, tractor trailers, and a response to the oil or whatever that was spilled. These pictures here represent some of the places that our team responded to in the course of their work. We don't do the work by ourselves. We work with the state, the feds, if necessary, to protect the health and well-being of our residents.
Could I just ask you where the pictures are from? They're pretty disturbing. What are they?
Yes. Paul?
Yeah, the top one was a car carrier that caught on fire on Route 80, right where it goes over the Passaic River by the Totowa Wills Park Quarter. The bottom one is, that was a joint exercise with the other counties in the UASI region at the mental lands where they were stimulating some sort of bomb threat in the old arena there that they were able to utilize. That's just the multi-agency, interagency working mutual aid type stuff, showing that, you know, we were able to bring all those assets from different municipalities and counties and use them as one. And then, the far right is a water inspection, so that's just showing the infrastructure of where the well is coming into a facility.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So as I mentioned about the collaboration, and Paul mentioned UASI, for those who don't know, UASI stands for Urban Area Strategic Initiative, and we have, and it comprises of seven counties, the ones that are just outside New York City and two large cities. The large cities are Jersey City and Newark, I mean, Jersey City, yes, and Newark. And so, not only do we collaborate with them for hazmat events and exercises, but we also do a lot of emergency preparedness exercises with that team as well, and Iris Lee actually serves on the board for the public health team. The Right to Know program is also part of environmental, and that's the program that goes into businesses and also trains county employees regarding the right to know what kind of chemicals they're exposed to in the community. And this just shows some of the radon test kit program that we distribute to residents and our requests regarding, I guess, Oprah requests regarding files, et cetera, that we do. The Office of Consumer Protection is a new office, as per the new code, but we were actually doing the work already, and that's the team that does the inspections of restaurants and pools and so forth. And this file shows, this slide shows some of the inspections that they completed for 2023. I actually like the graphic there. The graphic shows where it's dangerous to hold food, you know, the temperature that's dangerous for food, which is one of the ways that they conduct their inspections. Back in the old days, the inspections were what we call floors, walls, and ceilings. Now, it's more science-based, and it's time and temperature-controlled, because that's how bacteria grows depending on the temperature. So this just speaks to what they have done, and we have a team of six inspectors now under this. These are the ones that also go, excuse me, into our contracted municipalities to conduct the inspections. This slide, again, is from the same team. We trained several staff to provide food managers and food handler certifications. So there's a requirement for all the food establishments to have people who are trained in food management and food handling, and what they normally do is they would find a provider and take the classes from them and provide a certificate to us. We decided that we wanted to have people on our team who are certified to teach and certified to proctor the exams, so we had three people trained last year to do that. That's just some highlights of what's happening. The third bullet is really interesting, because this is with one of our partners, West Milford, which is almost, you know, all septic, and so there was a big program that they had there, and our team really helped to manage the septic pumping program in West Milford. And that really prepares us for other locations where there is a high percentage of septic.
This next slide has Office of Solid Waste and Recycling, and this is the department that provides us with the collection events throughout the year where we're able to dispose of either documents that we want to shred, computer electronics, hazardous materials, just to name a few. And for 2023, our environmental health educator went around Passaic County schools, camps, and recreation programs and really spoke with children from pre-K up to fifth grade about the importance of recycling, helped them build those skills on how to recycle properly throughout Passaic County, and they were able to conduct a total of 222, 25 programs and reach a total of 3,502 students in Passaic County. Also, for 2023, the office worked with Clifton, city of Clifton, and created a shared services agreement so we could begin to have a program known as the polystyrene foam recycling program. So for this specific program, their equipment or our equipment is installed in the city of Clifton DPW building, and we have provided city of Clifton with collection bins, as you can see in the image in the slide, and these are basically the bins where the residents of the city of Clifton currently will be able to drop off any foam packaging waste. And hopefully, in the springtime of 2024, we will be able to expand this into our other municipalities as well. So for early 2024, we're looking into purchasing additional collection bins and hopefully create additional shared services agreements so our municipalities can work with Clifton in collecting this and reducing the waste that comes from packaged products. How big? Nina would have that information.
The collection bins.
Oh, the bins themselves? Oh, um, they can basically hold three very large, sort of like the industrial size hefty type bags, like the 50 gallon, they can hold three of those in one of those bins. Some of the municipalities are looking to actually get some roll-off containers, because they're anticipating a lot more than just, you know, what could fit in those bins. However, if the bins overflow, the municipalities can simply just bring the material to Clifton on a more frequent basis. It would really be up to them. At this point, we're expecting them just to bring it whenever it's full, and I guess they're going to kind of assess how long it takes to fill a bin.
Okay, so that one, the municipality of that bid for recycling contracts, the foam is a new addition to the bid process, or is the county going to be taking point on that?
The polystyrene is not going to be a curbside material. What it's going to be is it's going to be a drop-off item for the municipality, for the residents. They'll bring it to their drop-off center, and then the municipality will bring it on an as-needed basis to Clifton, where it will be processed there.
Oh, okay. That's not on the city hall property, though, right? It's on their one?
No, it's at the DPW on East 7th Street. We just had a meeting in December, actually, with all the towns. They got to see a demonstration. It's been up and running for about two months, and the municipal recycling coordinators were very excited to be jumping onto this, and so some of them have actually started looking for getting roll-off containers, as I say, as opposed to just the smaller bins, thinking that they're going to be having quite a need for it. People are really interested in getting rid of that packaging waste.
In addition, with the Office of Solid Waste and Recycling, we distributed over 6,000 reusable tote bags due to the single-use plastic bag legislation that was adopted on May 2022. So in order for us to assist our residents and so they could help us with this legislation, we provided those tote bags in our different municipalities in Passaic County. Also, with our Recycle Coach application, this is the application that we can download into our phones and get information regarding curbside collection in the municipality, individualized municipality, and also so we could make people aware of the collection events that are occurring in Passaic County. Yes. Yes. Yes, correct. That's the application. So. So the application previously provided us with only English and Spanish. In 2023, we made sure to add Arabic language as well, and we had a total of 27 recycling collection programs for 2023. This next slide is our emergency preparedness division. So we do emergency preparedness at the Department of Health Services, and we work with our MRCs, who are our medical reserve corps. They assisted us all through the COVID-19 pandemic, and they continue to assist us with any onsite, offsite clinics that we may have, or just any events that are occurring, drills. And we also provide them with trainings. So for 2023, we provided them with CPR training, summer safety, ready senior workshops, and also active shooter event that took place on August 2023. So we keep them engaged and active and just continue to provide these trainings so they could develop additional skills or just, you know, keep them sharp for a next emergency that we may face.
Is that our goal on training CPR? Do we have a goal? We have X amount of employees, and more employees than no CPR is federal PR as a county, because you save lives, and you don't have no CPR, you can't do anything, right? So what's the goal?
So to speak about the Health Department, this is about the medical reserve corps, and our goal is to have all of them trained in CPR and first aid. Regarding the county, I think that decision will have to come from this body to inform us on how you would like us to proceed. But the Sheriff's Department and other departments have the bandwidth and the trained personnel to do the training. This particular report is about the people who helped us at William Patterson and other places and what we provide for them. And regarding goals for that, those goals are set by the state, and actually, it comes from the feds, and then the state will give us a work program and tell us, these are the areas we want you to concentrate on this year, and so this was one of them.
Well, I was happy you did all those preparations when we actually had COVID. It paid off.
It paid off, yeah, for sure.
And just to demonstrate how, you know, emergency preparedness is an important task in the Health Department, early 2023, because things were calming down with COVID, we decided to do an inventory drill where staff and MRCs went into the warehouse, and we really went through each single piece of supply equipment just to see what we currently have, and then if we need to order additional equipment or supplies to get that done. So this is the image that you see up here, our staff and the MRC volunteers assisting us with that project.
One last thing about the MRCs. At the beginning of COVID, we were able to distribute masks and gloves to all of the health departments, even to the hospitals, because we had them in our warehouse. So we provide a lot of other services that we can't obviously bring to this table. All right, so the next division is communicable disease and nursing, and so that's the epidemiologists and the nurses, and you've seen all of them out on the road and the programs that they do. This slide speaks about, you know, various pieces of data that our epidemiologists put together for us, but I also wanted to bring to your attention, in 2023, 49 residents of Passaic County died from COVID, and that's huge and that's important to know. In January of 2024, we have already lost eight residents of Passaic County to COVID. So COVID might be, you know, prevalent and it's endemic, but, you know, we are still losing people to COVID, so we really must be mindful of that going forward. So this slide speaks to all the different things that they do. In addition to COVID, obviously, they do other diseases, and the numbers represent the municipalities that we cover. Eighteen outbreaks were managed, and they're usually in long-term care facilities, daycares, schools, and our epidemiologists are the lead in managing those. They work with the school nurses, they work with the ICPs, whether it's hospital, whether it is long-term care facilities. ICP stands for infection-controlled personnel. Yes.
So the number of residents who have died from COVID that we read into in our agenda of 285, does that update it, reflect it, to the number that has changed?
The one that's, 2,000, no, 2,000, yes, that's from the entire, from the beginning of the COVID to now. Actually, today, the number went up a little bit, so it's 2289.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Nufer 2023 was the health clinic in Totowa, the Well Child Clinic. We got approval from the state and from the feds, and so we have these vaccine for children program, adult vaccine programs, and they've been very active, and more so with the immigrant situation that we have. We have three locations, Totowa, Wanacue, and West Milford. We also do lead screenings, glucose screenings, and, you know, the screenings that you're all familiar with that we do. The eye screening continues, and for 2024, we just discussed with the Commission for the Blind to expand the program, so we're actually going to have two clinics per month. They're both going to be at the Totowa location. Thanks.
Are you still collecting licenses?
Not right now, but we're going to start again soon.
Health promotion and wellness. So in our department, we continue to provide different type of programs throughout Passaic County on everything you could see listed here. So childhood lead poisoning prevention, chronic disease, just if it's something that we're able to provide, we make sure to provide it to our towns. So for 2023, we did a total of 93 programs and reached 3,100 residents in Passaic County with this information. Also, we were working on events, so we had our women's health extravaganza and our men's health extravaganzas, and we promoted this information so we can provide our community residents with free health services. It's something that is necessary and hopefully will lead to better health in the long run. So women's health extravaganza, we were able to reach 62 women in Passaic County. For the men's health extravaganza, we reached 49, and then for our family wellness event, we reached a total of 20 families in Passaic County. And this slide here is information regarding our overdose fatality review team. This is a program that is run, funded by CDC and run by the Department of Health. We have OFRT coordinator, and our coordinator meets with different agencies in the county and in the state, so our medical examiner, with our sheriff's department, our prosecutor's office, and just any agency that deals with overdose and opioids. They meet on a bi-monthly basis. They receive cases from the medical examiner, and they go over these decedent cases, and they really just discuss what happened with these particular cases, what was the gap between, you know, hospital and treatment center, and they really just try to identify any gaps, identify preventable risk factors. any gaps, identify preventable risk factors, and at the end, recommend potential efforts that are gonna help the state of New Jersey. So, they do this on a bi-monthly basis, and not to brag, but for 2023, early 2023, the State Department of Health was looking for two exemplary agencies, OFRT agencies, so they could present to the CDC what we're doing at the state. Ocean County was the original OFRT in the state, and then it expanded to other counties in the state, and the other agency was Passaic County, and they were very impressed with what we've been doing with our forum, the No More Dead Ends on the Road to Recovery forum. So, we just detailed what our OFRT program was doing in Passaic County and the success of the forum. So, the forum that we held for 2023 took place in October 27, when we held our first annual forum, we had 86 attendees. This year, we had 115 attendees, and obviously, for 2024, we're planning to do our third annual forum, and we're expecting an increase of attendees as well.
All right, so another thing that we began last year was the community health needs assessment and other requirement for the state, and this one is very detailed, and I'm hoping that all of you have done it already. If you haven't, please do it. Our goal is to get 5,300 surveys completed. It's intense, but we're really trying to capture what residents in Passaic County need, because that's going to help us to figure out what programs to provide. The other piece of this that's really exciting is that we're going to use the needs assessment to help us with the Public Health Accreditation Board, which is another program that we started. It's to accredit the department to national standards, and the purpose for that is to raise the standard of our services here in Passaic County. Not many, I think there are eight now, health departments in New Jersey are accredited, one county, and that last year, we, Passaic County had our first department accredited, and that was the city of Clifton. So, big shout out and kudos to Clifton for achieving accreditation. So, that's next for us. That's, we've started, we've hired somebody who is the main person for that, and it's on its way. All right, so that's the end of the, you know, the pieces that we wanted to bring to your attention for today, and is required on the NJSA, New Jersey statutes annotated for the health department. But I grabbed this slide from the last presentation, normal presentation that we did, and that was the slide, that was the last slide from the 2020 presentation I did here, and it was telling about the hot topic of coronavirus, and, well, we know the history of that now. So, I just wanted to end with that, because that's what we knew at that time, and have we come a long way since then. Yes. All right, thanks for listening. We have meta requirement, we could check that this box off, and if you have any, if you have any questions for us, you know where to find us, and thanks for listening, and thanks to the team for being here and answering all the questions, and of course, thanks to you, Ariselli.
Thank you very much, Dr. That's, as always, a reminder of the way your unit saves lives here in Passaic County every day, so appreciate that. Matt, what's next?
Yep, thank you, Dr. Gungell and Ariselli. Next, we have a public hearing for the county's 2024 grant application to the Green Acres Program for improvements at the Peckman Preserve, one of our facilities in the Passaic County Park System, so I'll turn this over to Lo.
I'll read the announcement of the public hearing. This public hearing is being held to solicit the comments from the public regarding the county of Passaic seeking funding through the state of New Jersey Green Acres Program for improvements at Peckman Preserve located at Wilmore Road, locate Little Falls, New Jersey, 07424, nearest intersection at Wilmore Road and Prospect Street. Project scope, the county of Passaic proposes improvements at Peckman Preserve through the development of a passive recreational area. The concept plan shows the proposed changes and preliminary cost estimates and environmental impact assessment to the project can be found at passaiccountynj.org. Thank you. Forward slash DCHA. The public hearing is being held today, 12 noon on Friday, February 20th, Friday, February 2nd, in this room, Passaic County Administration Building. The following public hearing was noticed in the Herald News and the Record on January County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy. Are you still with us?
It's here.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Here.
Lapore.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on this Green Acres application?
I'll move it.
Lapore and James, right? Yep. Okay.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy. Are you still with us, Duffy? All right. Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, so this is not the public portion of a regular meeting, this is specific to this Green Acres application. Does anyone present desire to be heard on the application?
Seeing no one, I'm going to close. Second.
Usually comes from this side of the house.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy. Gallo.
Yes.
James. Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, can I have a motion to adjourn that public hearing?
I'll move it.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy. Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
Can I have two seconds just to call him?
Sure.
Matt, while Louis stepped away, do you want to explain our next public hearing, and then we'll have him, we'll open it when he gets there.
Sure, and I'll just note, I think there's a typo in the agenda, but the next public hearing is held to solicit comments from the Department of Culture and Historic Affairs' desire to establish prequalification of bidders for the exterior restoration of the historic Passaic County courthouse. This is related to our, one of the capital ordinances that we're introducing. And while we have a moment of downtime, do you, maybe Kelly can come up and explain to us a little bit what this project is? How about that?
That'd be great. Putting you on the spot.
He said two minutes, but I really. So, first, thanks.
You want to pull up a chair? And turn on the microphone.
Teaching voice. All right. Okay, thank you. So, first, thank you and the administration for moving this project forward in many of our historic preservation initiatives over the last six, seven years, and just relaying a comment, we've been speaking with other counties and working on cross-county partnerships, and Passaic County is seen as the model for historic preservation throughout the state. So, the courthouse, though planned, starting the construction in 1890s, was completed in 1904. It's listed in the courthouse historic district, which was locally designated in 2014 with help to Matthew Jordan, actually, and the HBC, and then in 2015, on the state and national registers of historic places, which was prompted by the Passaic County's planning department. In 2020, we received a grant to run a conditions assessment, which outlined all the deficiencies with the building, and prepared sort of recommendations on that and cost estimating. So, with that report and moving forward with construction documents, we were able to apply and receive a $2.25 million grant from the New Jersey Historic Trust. This is the second largest grant by the state to the county for preservation. We were actually the first county to receive a $2.25 million grant. It's through their multi-phase program, which was a new program, and that was for Lambert Castle in 2019. So, we're very fortunate to be able to be awarded those projects. So, just in summary, this is for the exterior restoration, which will include all masonry repairs, repointing, fixing the balustrades, the cornice, cleaning all of the bio growth on the building. We will be repairing the copper dome and the statuary at the top. We will be looking at repair and replacement of all the metalwork details. Some have been lost, so those will come back, and we'll be removing the stairs. If you're on the Clark Street side, there's that sort of granite block that will be gone, so the original portico and entrance will be brought back. And then there are some landscaping elements to connect from the Hamilton Street side to the Clark Street side. And, yeah, that's it. Any questions?
Exciting.
It is exciting. It will be.
Thank you, Kelly. Is that gonna affect at all use of the building during the process?
No.
Any of the courtrooms?
No, and we are gonna be working with the judges on.
Yeah, we have a meeting, I think, on Monday with the assignment judge and the trial court administrator to go over the impact and how we're gonna make sure that they can maintain court operations during construction.
I know that the chief justice is gonna be visiting our judiciary later this month. I'm sure he'd love to hear about this. If you've got any little write-up on it, please share. So, okay, so that was the part we were gonna hear after the public hearing roll call, but instead, we're gonna move into the public hearing roll call right now?
No, you gotta read this part.
Oh, and sorry, announcement and roll call. There was, this is listed twice. Yeah, I noted it.
All right, this public hearing is being held and solicit comments from the public regarding the county of Passaic Department of Culture and Historic Affairs' desire to establish prequalifications to bidders for the exterior restoration of the historic Passaic County courthouse, whose address is 71 Hamilton Street in the county of Patterson, the city of Patterson, New Jersey. The goal of this project are to clean, repair, and restore the entire exterior condition of the building, repair all existing metalwork installation of the new roofing, reconstruction of stairs, and repair improvements to the copper dome. The scope of work consists of single prime contract for general conditions, acquisition of all required permits, provisions of temporary facilities and controls, selective demolition, and masonry, and roof restoration according to the project manual, plans, and specifications. The public hearing is being held today, 12 noon of February 2nd, in room, in this room, 220, Passaic County Administration Building. The following public hearing was noticed in the Herald News and the Record on January 6, 2024. Sixteenth.
Thank you, Lou, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Here.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Here.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Here.
Director Bartlett.
Here, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy, Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on the application? Kelly just described to us.
Seeing no one in the public, I'm gonna make a motion close.
Second.
Seconded by Duffy. County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, and I'll take a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
All right, Matt, anything else on your agenda?
That's all I have for director today, director, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and thanks to everybody who was part of that from our staff. So, that brings us to county commissioner reports. I said a lot of what I wanted to say earlier in the meeting, but for our employees and for law enforcement officers and for everyone here in the county of Passaic, I just wanna remind you that if you need help, if you need to talk to someone, there are resources available. For any Passaic County employee, our employee assistance program can be reached at 1-800-663-0404. There's a cop-to-cop counseling service available for law enforcement officers at St. Joseph's Crisis Hotline can be reached at 973-754-2230, and of course, anywhere in the nation 24/7, you can call the National Suicide and Crisis Hotline by dialing 988. Is any? Commissioner Duffy, anything?
No, nothing, thank you.
All right, Nick? Nothing, thank you. Cruz?
I'd like to thank all of our department heads. We've had a rough beginning of this year. You guys have been a big help to everybody and through a lot of this, so I really do appreciate everybody who helped, everybody who respected the family, the families that were dealing with this and didn't make terrible comments. You guys have been there for all of us, and I really do appreciate it, and I will not forget it.
With no communications, that brings us to letter K on the agenda, the oral portion. Can I have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting?
Move it. County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, this is the part where members of the public can approach the podium. You'll have three minutes. Please begin with your name and address, and take note that whatever you have to say will become part of the public record of today's meeting.
Seeing no one, I'm gonna make a motion close.
Second.
Seconded by Duffy. County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, that brings us to letter L, a resolution requiring two-thirds vote. Lou, do you need to read the name of that into the record?
No.
Okay, then I'll just call for a motion and a second on L1.
I'll move it.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, that brings it to letter M, the consent agenda. Counsel, any late starters or amendments?
Yes, Director, we do have one late starter. Just read it for the record, for the record, it's a resolution qualifying New Jersey Board of Public Utilities licensed third-party electric and/or natural gas suppliers to provide electricity and natural gas supply services to participating members of the Passaic County Energy Regional Cooperative Pricing System for calendar year 2024 pursuant to NJSA 48, code 111-5, and RFQ-24-061. I'd ask that M73 be added to the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll call for that motion in a second. Before I do that, are there any items on the consent agenda that any commissioner wants pulled off and voted separately? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to add M73?
I'll move it.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, and can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, M1 through M73?
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, all right, that brings us to new. And one, I'm sorry, is there something else to do? We're good?
Okay.
And one. Okay. If counsel.
Guarantee ordinance. I'm sorry, Director, the guarantee ordinance incorrectly included the phrase Veterans Housing Project in two location, the title, as well as the third line of the sixth whereas clause. The correct phrase should read Senior Housing Project.
With that change, can I have, do we need to read anything into the record, Lou?
Director, we received a supplemental death statement from the CFO, and then I will read, I will read the first guaranteed ordinance. Twenty twenty-four dash oh one amended and reinstated guaranteed ordinance of the county of Passaic, New Jersey, securing the Passaic County Improvement Authorities, county of Passaic, guaranteed revenue bonds, senior housing project, series twenty twenty-four, in one, in one or more series, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty million. County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazare.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, that brings us to bond ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two.
Bond ordinance to authorize the undertaking of the Passaic County Courthouse Exterior Restoration Project in and by and for the Open Space Trust Fund of the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of eleven million five hundred thousand to pay the cost thereof, to appropriate the state, I'm sorry, to appropriate, appropriate a state grant to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazare.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, that brings us to bond ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three.
Bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements in, by, and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of ten million five hundred thousand to pay for the cost thereof, to make, make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of such, I'm sorry, issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazare.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, can I have a motion on the personnel?
Move the personnel.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.